Hi Jeff, Carrie. Evan.
Hi Anya.
Hi Lynette.
Hello, hello.
Hi Lynette.
Hello. Evan, how are you? I haven't seen you for a very long time.
I'm doing well.
Yeah, and you don't have a baby anymore. You have a grown up child. I mean, how old?
It feels that way. He's seven months old now.
I know, I know. It happens and passes so fast, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Seven months, really? I thought he was like three months old.
I know, I know, I know.
Every time I, every day when I come home, I pick him up and he's a little bit bigger, a little heavier, doing more. It's so much fun.
Oh, enjoy these days.
Yep. He has a great little personality.
Oh, that's cool. Well, he has a dad who has a great personality. There you go.
Yeah, we took him to the beach last weekend for the first time, so that was a lot of fun. He got a kick out of playing in the sand.
Oh my goodness, how exciting. Good for you. Good for you.
Hi Fred.
Hello, you got in.
Great. We have Fred is for Lynette's benefit. Fred is our inner and public works director while Bob is on medical leave for a little while. And so Fred is filling in and helping us out.
Hi Fred, welcome.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
We're gonna get to see you Fred.
Pardon me? Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to turn my camera on. I'm on Bob's machine rather than my laptop and there we go.
Maybe not.
There we go. You can see the top of my head anyway. He's obviously taller than I am.
Okay, we don't need you anymore Fred.
Okay, bye. Hi Carrie, how are you?
Great, how are you doing Fred? Welcome back.
I'm doing fine.
Good.
I see you haven't beaten Rarig up to a Pope yet, so.
Nope.
Now, it's been fun to watch from afar how well the team came together. A whole bunch of good people from Monterey.
Yeah. Well, it's all about making it happen.
Yeah. As you probably know, Bob came through his surgery in flying colors yesterday.
Yes.
He had the nursing staff in pre-op just in tears with laughter with his jokes and he was cracking jokes in recovery. So it looks like everything is still intact up there and they got the extra stuff out.
That's great news. If you can do that from surgery and have a sense of humor, you're ahead of the game.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have everybody here today. Scott did email me to say that he wasn't able to make it, or if he did make it, it would be quite late in the meeting.
And Michael's iPhone is Michael LePage?
Yes, yeah, I'm actually was traveling, so I have to go on my phone.
Okay.
But I'm here, I'm here.
Be safe.
Yeah, I'm, it should be on video here within about 20 minutes.
Okay, so I guess we'll call the meeting to order the February 17th climate committee meeting. We'll note that everybody's here except Scott.
Although I am missing, I am missing Michael Hendricks, who is an important part of our meeting, so let me.
He's our first agenda item.
Yes, I mean, I will check where he's at.
We could always reshuffle the agenda a little bit, but that's.
Well, let me see if there's anybody that wishes to speak in public appearances. Let's see, we have one foreigner on board. Kiara. Okay. Hold on, hold on a second and wait for Michael.
I just got on the phone with Michael. I'm sending him the invite again. He should be in shortly. Okay, apologies for that. He should be in, he should be, he just, he got it, so he should be on right about now. Technology. There he is.
There he is.
Hi Michael.
Hi, sorry for the delay. I was missing the Zoom invite and I just could not find it. Thanks to Anya, she resent it.
All right, so we're, yeah, you're on. We're just.
I'm running, Michael.
Yeah.
Do you need a minute to breathe?
Just a second. Let me share my screen. You like looking at this better than the background of my cluttered office anyways. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. So this is our fourth meeting, I believe. So I'm gonna do a quick review of what I presented the last time on the inventory update and forecast. And then the bulk of my presentation is going to be on the quantification of the revised measures that all of you had tweaked on. And I'll go through and highlight some of the changes that were made based on your comments as well as the quantification. Sometimes the quantification doesn't make sense, so I'll talk a bit about that too. So if you notice, if you remember, we updated the 2019 inventory primarily updating transportation to include full VMT. And that sector now with these revisions is the largest sector of your emissions, which makes sense. It's just shy of 46% of all the emissions. And there's a comparison there with the inventory that Ambag originally sent you. So you can see transportation really grew with what we did. And then last time I gave you just a composite of the revised inventory. So in addition to 2019, we did the same tweaking on 2015 and 2018. And you can see how those inventories now, you actually have a trend that makes sense. We didn't touch 2005 or 2010. But, and it was somewhere between 2010 and 2015, the Ambag did some changes in modeling that drastically reduced your VMT. So now your VMT makes a little more sense. And we went through the details of what all we did by figuring out trip types and coming up with VMT per trip based on those trip types. So this is the revised forecast. And as you can see, it still has a downward trend, a very slight downward trend with business as usual. And that is because there's such modest growth in Carmel. Job wise, it's better growth around 200 jobs between now and 2030, but population growth is extremely small. And when you add in just even in today's standards, just as the vehicle fleet gets newer and newer and those kinds of things with even with today's standards, those emissions go down slightly. That green area is the state reductions. As you can see, it takes an even bigger chunk of your emissions out roughly half halfway towards your target. It's 6,432 metric ton reduction by 2030. And then it doesn't level out. It continues to reduce over time between 2030 and 2045, but as you'll notice, it's not as steep. And that's because right now the state hasn't introduced any new regulations or come up with a scoping plan to get you beyond 2030. So our task in the local reduction measures is to fill in that red hashed area at least down to the targets. And we really focused on 2030 because that's something not only that's obtainable, but also it is like our first step. And we wanna, before we try tackling carbon neutrality, really get to understand what will be working and what will not be working in Carmel. So for that particular reason, we really focused on 2030. In addition, to get to carbon neutrality, the city can't do that on its own. It needs some broader help from the state. So as an example, you can't ban vehicles that are not electric vehicles from coming in the city. That's just not legal to do. So there's always going to be some emissions of people traveling outside the city into the city, things like that. The state can take care of that through their like their electric vehicle regulation that is going to ban the sale of combustion, new combustion engines, so that you only buy electric vehicles in the future here and things like that. The transit bus fleet, they're requiring those to be electric by 2025, I believe. So those broad-based efforts by the state in combination with the local reductions is what's going to get you to carbon neutrality in the future. Having said that, we want to set ourselves up in 2030 to be able to easily transition to carbon neutrality as the state assists. So we updated the reduction measures based on primarily some big changes on the transportation sector, which is goal seven to really hone in on the visitor trips and those longer vehicle mile traveled trips. Along with the others, commute trips and local trips as well, but that was one of the bigger changes. And then some other changes that you're gonna see has to do with the residential sector and the commercial sector on electrification. We had to do that to really get to the 2030 goal. So the total local reductions is 7,010 metric tons by 2030. That's a pretty conservative number. We calculated this on a whole Myrad of assumptions. And we got a lot of those assumptions. We made things very specific to Carmel. So visitor trips, we have a good handle on versus commuter trips, those kinds of things. We were able to customize it to fit that. But there's also a couple of documents. One is the California Air Pollution Control Officer's Guidance on Greenhouse Gas Mitigation Programs and providing you with equations and what is appropriate to calculate as far as reductions. So we included that in an updated spreadsheet that provides us with the quantification of the measures. One other thing I want to note, and we'll get into details on this later, you'll see four zeros. Not all of those are actually zero greenhouse gas emissions, but it's so small. Some of them are like one metric ton or 10 metric tons that when you look at the total 7,000 metric tons, it winds up being zero percent. It's less than 1%. So your biggest reductions come from transportation, followed by existing commercial and then solid waste and existing residential. You get a small portion from clean energy. And I'll get into the details of why those proportion up the way they did here as I go through. So we have nine broad goals with a bunch of actions under each one. Goal one was to increase energy efficiency in existing residential. So a lot of supporting measures. One of them that was quantified, increased participation in existing energy efficiency programs. There are a lot of existing energy efficiency programs that improve like trading out light bulbs, those kinds of things. It doesn't give you a lot of emission reductions, 1.7, primarily because the electricity coming into Carmel through 3CE is just really light on emissions. So improving, making your home more energy efficient from an electric point of view doesn't really get you a lot of reductions as far as GHGs. The two big ones is to promote, provide incentives to homeowners to convert to electrification. And then this new one that we added in, in order to meet our goal, require major home renovations to convert to electrification. As you can see, the incentive program, we're anticipating getting to 259 metric tons reduction. But the big one is the requirement, which is 1,035, almost 1,036 metric tons. And then there's another new measure in here, initiate a green citizens program. So for those folks, either through the requirement or are enticed through the incentives to electrify their homes, there's a little bit of recognition there for that. Any questions on goal one? I'm gonna move on to goal two, which is new residential. And you'll notice this really teeny amount of reductions of 0.01. This is because there is such a modest growth forecast. I think it was five additional households that equated, but not all of those households would be in new residential. What I got from Ambag was they were anticipating one new, brand new residential unit in the city. For the most part, I know you guys see a lot of construction, but primarily it's renovating existing residential. And that's why on goal one, we got so much is requiring electrification of some of those major remodels. And moving on to goal three, goal three kinda mirrors goal one, except that it is focused on existing commercial. And you'll notice the increased business participation in the existing energy efficiency programs. It's a little higher there. It's 69.4 metric tons. Still not a lot, but more than on the residential side. And then the two big ones provide incentives to businesses to convert to electrification and then require major commercial renovations to convert to electrification. On that second one, we do have exceptions for businesses that just have to have natural gas. And that would be businesses like restaurants, bakeries, pottery kilns, probably hotels. Those kinds of businesses would not be required to electrify, but for the real estate offices or the attorney offices or any other kind of commercial, it would require them to completely go over to electric. And that gets us 1,333 metric tons. So you can see, getting natural gas out of the picture on the energy sector is really one of the big reductions that we gain in these local reduction measures. It is the majority of the reductions associated with the residential and the commercial sector. And then goal four is to increase energy efficiency of new commercial. We took a rather conservative assumption that given the types of new commercial that are likely to go in, they would probably be able to exempt themselves from being required to electrify. And like I say, that's restaurants, bakeries, pottery kilns, hotels. So we just took the conservative assumption that those new commercial developments would gain us zero emission reductions. Goal five is energy efficiency through water conservation. And of the, you see that I have five bullet points up there. The top four are the things that you would do and it gets you a whopping three metric tons reduction, which seems very small. Two reasons for that. One is the electricity that really is generating those emissions as far as water usage is extremely low on emissions. But the other is that Carmel is already pretty conservative with water. You're really efficient with water. So you already exceed the state water efficiency standards. And so those, that three metric tons actually comes from initiating gray water systems, promoting rainwater harvesting and expanding recycled water for certain types of landscaping. Not a lot there, but water conservation is important. So we still have these as measures in there and as a goal. And then goal six is decrease energy demand by reducing the heat island effect. And we actually did not quantify any emission reductions associated with this goal, but it's still a really important one. The reason we didn't quantify anything is you already have a healthy urban forest canopy. So maintaining that maintains the status quo and it doesn't get you any additional reductions. But what it does do is it keeps the city from increasing its urban heat island effect, which would in turn increase emissions. So continuing the good work you do there is really important. The other tool to our cool roofs and cool pavement. And after the discussion of all the nuances of zoning code and the building code specific in Carmel, it seems that we didn't quantify those because it seems like there's a lot of nuances you need to go through to update those codes and even allow cool roofs or cool pavements. So currently, there's no emission reductions coming from goal six, but like I say, that urban forest canopy is probably your biggest current reduction of emissions that you need to maintain. Plus, it's just makes Carmel the community it is. Goal seven is decrease GHG emissions by reducing VMT. So there's a variety of programs here, develop a bicycle master plan. And we talked about the details of that bicycle master plan being pretty innovative in fitting into Carmel. So rather than have distinct bike lanes, having more of a European style signage and allowing bikes on the street. Ride sharing and bike to work programs are gonna modestly reduce your commutes, particularly for those that are workers that happen to be fairly close or are able to live in the same community or near each other and work at the same place. Identify and promote existing shuttle services to area airports for visitors to use. That one actually gains us some emissions. And then for the local trips, really setting up an NEV program incentives for that as well as any NEV shuttle so that visitors can use those rather than try and find an Uber or Lyft. Combined, all of those get you 563 metric ton reduction. The other one, the shuttle service between Monterey Airport and designated cities, we did not quantify it this time. That's something that the city should explore with Ambag and the airport to see if a shuttle service is justified. And obviously, you should probably go with an electric shuttle if it is. Explore the feasibility of increasing land use density in downtown, also not quantified. That would require some changes in your land use element of the general plan, which is a big change as well as zoning. So that's more of a long-term, maybe getting post 2030 by the time you get that done. And then develop an origin destination transportation model focused on the city. And we talked a bit about that last time as one of the recommendations. So when you update this plan or update the inventory, you're able to actually get VMT based on origin destination the way we approximated it with the tourism, commute trips, local trips and deliveries. And then goal seven, I set this one apart on a second slide because this is getting the biggest chunk of our reductions is electrification of the vehicle fleet. And we're, and the city is gonna do that through providing electric vehicle infrastructure. So installing additional e-chargers at existing businesses, provide priority parking at hotels for electric vehicles with e-chargers. Providing priority parking for bus tours that use electric buses. That's a new one. Require major commercial building renovations to install e-chargers. And then another one is initiate a green visitors program that awards tourists that use electric vehicles. That program should also provide a way for them to offset their air miles and any other emissions that they may have associated with their visit. Goal eight is reduce solid waste and it's a surprisingly large amount of emissions. The reason for this is there was a surprisingly large amount of emissions associated with solid waste. And if the city is able to continue the recycling program it does, there'll be significant reductions. And let me explain that a bit. You guys are currently, you currently have a very robust recycling program. The problem is that the recycling facilities did not gear up for the amount of recyclables they were gonna get, particularly with plastics. the amount of recyclables they were going to get, particularly with plastics. And um, well, particularly plastics. They took the lazy option of import or exporting that to those uh, that plastic waste to China, who here about four years ago stopped accepting plastic recyclables. Uh, they had their own stream within China itself that could do that and they didn't need it anymore. And that put our recycling facilities at a bit of a bind because they didn't have the capacity to actually do the recycling. So through no fault of Carmel, the the emissions from solid waste never really went down the way you would expect them to for Carmel, given the amount of recycling you guys do. That situation is changing, so the state is requiring all recycling recycling facilities in the state to have facilities that can accommodate the the recycling flow that and and they've actually allocated productions for them that they have to gear up to. So they've been buying the additional equipment and and setting up so by twenty I think they have a a requirement by twenty twenty-four to be fully automated to accept and recycle all of the recyclables they they get. That will significantly reduce um, emissions there, so that's where that fifteen hundred metric tons come from. Also to promote home composting. And if people, people are going to have two choices with organics, they either compost it at home or they put it in the recycling bin where the recycling facilities are required to compost it through SB thirteen eighty-three.
And I, I just have to interject, that is the the green bin, now the blue bin, the green bin. I just want to make sure, since we just mentioned recycling, I don't want people to put their food waste in the recycling bin, so. Just had to interject, sorry.
Yes, so Anyas i- in good fashion is already initiating that last bullet, educate the community on the use of the s- city provided containers. So the green one, right? There you go. And then goal nine is the last one, increase clean energy use. It's three hundred and sixty-four metric tons of uh, GHGs, which seems small for this, for most cities, this is really large, but because you're on three CE, they're already really lean on emissions, so uh, we do get three hundred and sixty-four metric tons of reduction from that. Nothing to sneeze at, so that's where that that I think that is a total of five percent of the reductions in the city. So this is what that forecasted emissions look like with those reduction reduc- local reductions quantified. And you'll notice that it by twenty thirty, you exceed the goal a little bit, you're actually below that uh, one seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-one target by uh, several hundred metric tons, which is a good thing, it's always nice to have a buffer like that. And you'll notice that that continues to on a downward trend towards twenty forty-five. And that's because over time we're expecting more of the existing residential and more of the existing businesses to convert to electrification and of course the renewing of the vehicle fleet, there's going to be more electric vehicles. But it doesn't get you to carbon neutrality, that's where the state can step in and actually um make some big changes on statewide vehicle uh, regulations as well as statewide uh, natural gas regulations, which they're already planning to do. So I went through that really fast. Any questions?
Hi, Michael.
Yes.
Um, so thank you for everything that you've done and especially for uh, two things, the the numbers, the the ton, the tonnage numbers in the report that you just did, as well as the attention to detail that you obviously put in with Anyas and Evan to sort of tailor um, a lot of this stuff for Carmel. If I may make a suggestion, um, since this is a pretty long report and could be a short discussion or a long discussion. Perhaps we could have this discussion in nine pieces, one, one uh, one piece for each slide. So we can sort of, we can sort of go down this topic by topic rather than just sort of starting it to be, starting and having a bunch of comments that jump back and forth.
So I put us to goal one. Any discussions, tweaks, uh, comments on goal one?
Uh, Michael, it's Lynette. Um, I have a question on number one. What are the existing energy efficient programs that we should be encouraging people to participate more fully in? And is that part of what our education and outreach to the community should be is to help people understand what those are and how they might participate?
Yeah, so that very first bullet point is the education and outreach portion of that, which is the supporting measure. Um, the the participation in the existing energy efficiency programs is through three CE, they do have some energy efficiency programs, including energy audits of your home and 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 suggestions that'll come out of that. And that's where that modest one point seven metric tons comes from, so just getting into uh, really collaborating with three CE to uh, increase the participation of those programs is is what is going to get you that reduction.
On that same vein, um, are there ways that communities work with uh, utilities and other providers to help people know when there are incentives out there? For instance, to upgrade your old refrigerator to greater efficiency, the same with washers and dryers and furnaces and so on.
Yes, so PG&E has a a lot of incentives uh, on that vein. The ones associated with electricity you may not qualify for since you're getting your electricity through C, three CE, but on the natural gas side, uh, uh, you'll you'll get rebates for um, putting in a a more efficient heater or um water heater, those kinds of things. They provide incentives for that as well. And then on the water side, the water districts are required to uh, provide you um, incentives, rebates, and they have their own programs for water efficient appliances, toilets, faucets, that kind of thing.
Right. Oh, I understand those are out there, I just don't know, um. First of all, they're not out there equally all the time. And it's difficult, I think, for people to know what they are, when they're being offered and how to access those. And I was wondering if part of that is what you have in mind in the education piece?
Yes.
Okay.
And to give you an example, and I, uh, the slides don't go into these details, but I think the um reduction matrix that Anya sent you earlier talks about things like uh, sustainability fairs or or s- events like that are actually a great way of introducing people to all of the energy efficiency rebates, incentives, and even uh, the the equipment that we could be used, you know, you can have um, a vendor there that does heat pumps and can show you how a heat pump works. An electric vehicle and just let you see what an uh, Tesla was routinely at those sustainability fairs in Southern California, so having those kinds of events is kind of a a place where you could have all of the different utilities and incentive programs in one place to to let people be aware that they're there. And just as important, they can sign up for them while they're there. That's one of many, the other is not that you guys probably go to the planning desk very often, but but having things on the counter at the city offices uh, that talk about and have the forms and applications for these different incentives and rebates is is helpful as well. And then a webpage on the city website might be helpful as well.
Exactly, thank you so much, I like, I think all of those are really great ideas for us to consider. Especially, yeah, I like that a lot.
Uh, Michael, I have a question about the one thousand thirty-five metric tons for conversion to electrification and home renovations. As I understand that the state codes that take effect in January are no longer, well, basically eliminating uh, natural gas, hot water heating and uh, space heating um, in in favor of uh, uh, heat pumps, so this one thousand thirty-five is for other reductions, not associated with those state reductions?
No, because the state reductions only apply to new buildings in Title twenty-four code. This uh, is to require major home renovations to convert to electrifications, now I I get what you're saying. Uh, when they go, if they do a major renovation and they're going to completely redo their HVAC system, they're going to buy what's on the market. And if their heat pumps are the only thing on the market, then that's, that's what they'll get.
Right, but I, Evan, maybe this is a question for you, but I thought any major renovation was going to be required to follow Title twenty-four, so wouldn't that be included in the state numbers? I I I just, I'm surprised at how much this is based on what's left if you take out uh, hot water heating and space heating out of the equation.
I'll have to double check, I, for some reason, I, it it sticks out in my memory that the update only required it to be electric ready. So that was dedicated outlets and and spaces for these um, you know, future appliances. I I didn't think it went as far as actually requiring it across the board.
And it doesn't yet. I know there's contemplation on the next uh, update of Title twenty-four requiring heat pumps to get you into electrification.
Yeah, I think the one that goes into effect in January twenty-three for next year does require. So I I don't know, that's my only point is, are we double counting here, it's my question?
No, because in our um, adjusted business as usual, that graph that's just right here, we did not include a Title twenty-four that eliminated uh, natural gas for heating, water heating or space heating. So that's why you have such a large reduction here is, this is that one thousand thirty-five includes the conversion of um HVAC systems to include heat pumps rather than natural gas furnaces and electric water heaters.
Yeah, because that's like ninety percent of what a house uses are are from those two.
Yeah.
Those two, uh, uh. Okay, well then that 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 helps, so basically the 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 slide you showed that showed the descending uh, graph doesn't necessarily take into account the twenty twenty-two codes that had come into effect in twenty twenty-three, if it does in fact require or eliminates hot water and uh, space heating from natural gas.
Yeah, so I I can double check Title twenty-four, the the latest new update, but my understanding is the one that uh, is going to go into effect January of next year only requires that you have your um that that it's ready for that, that it has the electrical conduit and and receptacles in order to be able to change out when you change out your your heater to a heat pump and the same for the water heater requires a electrical outlet there for uh, electric water heating, but doesn't require those yet. Uh, when I said next iteration, that is supposed to hit twenty twenty-five, I believe. Is where I think they they're contemplating requiring that.
Okay.
So this gets us there a little early.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I I just have one more question.
Michael has a question. He he said he's had it for a little while. Did you wanna?
Yeah, yeah, I have a question, um, Michael, I was wondering if your uh, inventory uh, takes into account the actual construction projects here in uh, uh, you know, construction of these projects for the uh, GHG inventory.
So we did not add as a a separate sector uh, construction related emissions, which would be off-road equipment primarily and and maybe a little from the construction materials. In there is um part of the VMT is associated with that on on-road, but I don't believe we have an off-road component to your inventory, and the reason for that is that uh, we are following the same sectors that Ambag did. Our major change was on the VMT side, we didn't add sectors like construction and off-road equipment.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lynette, you had another question?
I did, um, and it goes to the incentives to homeowners to convert. Um, and and this may get a little tangled up in what was being discussed before. Whether renovations, whether it's required for renovations or now or in the future, or just for new build and what is the nature and kind of size of an incentive that would draw a homeowner to convert?
So some of those is streamlining that permitting process. Uh, having this green citizens program, basically convincing them to do the right thing. I I don't know that the city has the kind of budget that would allow them to have like uh, monetary incentives, like a rebate program or anything like that, but uh, certainly if PG&E and I expect they may be required to have that in the future, if they have that, that would be a huge incentive. So right now it's little things that the city can do.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll notice it's fairly modest there.
Right, 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 understood.
And then on that uh, home renovations, we made an assumption that uh, home renovations that involve seventy percent of the square footage or more would be required to go to electrification. You could probably increase that number if you were to lower that percentage, but it seems like there are a lot. In fact, the majority of the construction in Carmel is home renovations where they strip things, take out the drywall and strip it down to the studs. And that is the perfect opportunity to uh, do this conversion without much cost compared to maybe a modest uh, renovation. All right, to go to goal two?
I have a a few, a few questions, so to go back to what uh, Michael LaPage was asking. So for example, one of the things that we always hear is that concrete, the the production of concrete is really greenhouse gas intensive, so these numbers do not include, so for example, you know, if someone has five concrete trucks of concrete in their home that they're building or renovating, as the case may be, these numbers don't include um, the numbers for that concrete that's used.
No, so the the um greenhouse gases that are produced in in the production of um, cement, which is where the majority of emissions come from in concrete, are already accounted for at the state level in their in the scoping plans inventory. And they also, they also have regulations to significantly reduce that. I think they have a sixty percent reduction on GHG emissions associated with um cement kilns. cement kilns and the other production components of cement. So the concrete itself, you add water, there's not a lot of CO2 that comes off of that. But it, the, the creation of cement requires mining of limestone and then, and then processing it in the kilns. It's where you get a huge amount of GHG emissions. An enormous amount of CO2 comes off of the kilns as fugitive emissions when they are heating up the limestone and creating cement.
Okay, thank you. And the other question was sort of about to extend on something Lynette was talking about, that 259 number for provided incentives to homeowners. So what I heard you say, Michael, was that we could, for example, you know, smooth the way that transitions by, like if I walked into City Hall and wanted to replace my gas boiler with an electric boiler, the city would just waive all of the fees, for example, to do that. That's, that's, I think what you said, is that right? So the $1,500 in permit fees that it would cost for me to do that.
Well, I didn't exactly say that. I said streamline the permitting process. Be nice if they could waive those fees. I defer to Evan and Anya's practicality of that.
Maybe that's not. So my question is basically that. I, I don't need to defer to Evan. My question would be, is that a number, is that 259 numbers? So if the city made an effort, and let's say we allocated, you know, $100,000 a year to incentivize people to do this. So past the fees, you know, we said every year we're going to give, you know, 40, $2,500 grants to people that electrify their homes and cut off their gas supply. Do we have some control over that 259 number?
Like, oh, yeah. That, that would that would increase that number because what, what we're assuming is a couple of percent of the homeowners would, would do that on the incentive base, just off of basically wanting to be a green citizen and, and easing the process of them doing that. So if you actually provide monetary incentives, I could see the participation easily doubling.
Because, yeah, I think that would be, you know, sort of, sort of a note to Anya's. I mean, I think that would be sort of an interesting thing to track, you know. I, I asked you before, it sounds like Michael has given you all of the sort of numbers that sort of stand behind this analysis. And presumably there's a percentage number there that led to that 259. And it would be really interesting, I think, in the future, if we offered an incentive program to track against those numbers to see if we can actually make a difference. Because, because we could probably make a pretty big difference, you know, with the expenditure of some money. Thank you. So I think if those are other questions, just go to the next slide.
Sure. So goal two and new residential units, that big, that, that big one new residential unit that Ambag has predicted for the future. That's, we get one one hundredth of a metric ton reduction associated with that.
Hello, Michael?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for this amazing work you've done. It's just fantastic. I am just a little curious about that, that factoid around the, I mean, if I understand it correctly, it seems like in the period of between 2020 and 2030, there's expected to be five houses or new houses to be built.
I, I believe it's five households and that equates to one new residential unit.
Every year.
Yeah.
Interesting. And you get that information from Ambag, is that correct?
I got it from their forecasts, yes, their growth forecasts.
Okay, got it. And, you know, I really agree with you in regards to if there is incentives for requiring electrification for remodels or, you know, a significant amount. It's so true. I think that a lot of what we're seeing around town in the construction mode is a lot of remodels that are significant, that, like you said, strip it down to the bare bones and then rebuild from there. And so I think that we could have a lot of leverage in reducing emissions using that. So that's, that's great. That's interesting about the Ambag factoid. Thank you. I really appreciate your time and all of your efforts.
Oh, you're welcome.
Questions on slide two? Well, yeah, I would say that Laura brings up an interesting point because it's interesting that you got this one or five number from Ambag, depending on how you parse it, when the city is going to be given an arena number, which is the number of houses that we need to build over the next eight or nine years of like 350. So it sounds like the climate part of Ambag maybe isn't talking to the housing part of Ambag. So I, I guess, I guess a question for you, Michael, would be, you know, if we build these 350 units and they're all electric, then this number is, is really applicable, right? It wouldn't affect our emissions at all.
That's the, if, if, yeah, that if you had 300 new affordable houses, I think that's what the Rena number would be, and they were all electric. Obviously, that point 01 metric tons reduction would go up quite a bit. And that is interesting that Ambag didn't have like a the housing portion of what Ambag does and the forecasting portion of what
Yeah, well, we'll straighten that out.
Don't, don't seem to jive. Yeah, 300 units would be a lot for Carmen. I, and I'm wondering
That's what the number is. That's what the number is going to be. I mean, I don't, it is what it is. So.
And it's 300 affordable units.
No, it's about, the last time I looked, it was more than half of them are, are affordable or less, but more than 100 of the units or whatever. And I think, you know, I think the Ambag definition of affordability is that they're sort of deed restricted or enforced. So there could conceivably be more than 150 units if the units are in downtown and they're small.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right. Shall I go on to goal three?
Sure.
So goal three is very similar to goal one, but on the existing commercial rather than residential.
Questions on goal three? I know John Hill, you had brought up something regarding restaurants and gas and all that. You were okay with what, what Michael had said earlier, what sort of proposed here? You're muted, John.
Sorry. No, I think, Michael, you said earlier that you would carve out restaurant usage where natural gas is is sort of practical necessity. So, but does that 1,033 take that into consideration, I guess, is the question?
Yes, it does. So the exempted businesses would be restaurants, bakeries, pottery kilns were the, the big three that we saw. And then potentially hotels because of what they do. But for a real estate office or like a, a small strip mall, those things would be required to go to electrification if, if they had renovations.
Yeah, most commercial projects are, are mostly, if you take out HVAC, they're almost all electric anyway. So can the HVAC conversion to electrification would be the biggest issue?
Yes.
Okay.
And we didn't, I just wanted to mention, we didn't really discuss it here. But there could be a resilience element to this reach code that we would potentially develop for, to require electrification where we would incorporate requirement for battery backup for some of these systems, so that there's both an adaptation and an action element.
That is the perfect combination for both resiliency and GHG reductions is, is if you had a sufficient battery backup of, of the businesses and residential units, whenever there's a power outage, you, you have that capacity. It's not going to shut down your heating system or anything else. On that being, I'll
I think Fred has a question.
It, it's actually more of a comment in, in my other life, so to speak. I was in the midst of working with the Defense Department, particularly the Army on their climate strategy that was actually just published. I'll get an electronic copy of it and, and give it to the group to see, you know, what's the Army thinking about. But, you know, we are in a very, very different world now in terms of how we ought to be thinking. And in many ways, there are some really ugly things out there that are so ugly, we don't want to think about them. We saw what happened in Texas due to climate change and the freeze, and they were not prepared for it. They almost lost the, the whole Texas grid. They were literally minutes away from losing it. They were able to shed just quick enough to keep from essentially blowing things up and being offline for months. As you look at the realistic threats that we're seeing almost every day occur in the United States, the Colonial Pipeline was a good indication of the capabilities of outside entities, governmental or non-governmental entities to really disrupt our way of life. So the military obviously looked at it from a national security point of view. What are we going to do when the grid goes down and we still have to launch this or that? But they're starting to realize that they will not be able to perform their military missions because all of their civilian workforce and about 70% of their military workforce live in our communities and are scattered throughout our communities. And that you can actually dramatically impact the livability of our country and our military capability by not even attacking the military. Take the grid down for two months and we're just not ready for even thinking about that. We are just now starting to think about what do we do with our rolling blackouts that are supposed to roll from PG&E blackouts? So this whole idea of building resilience into it, I think becomes more and more important over time as we start imagining what is going to happen in this future world. You're, you're seeing it going on in Europe right now. And we are, we are suffering cyber attacks literally every day. We don't read too much about them. But it's something that if there's a way of folding that in, particularly for those public safety, those, those public service buildings that are just absolutely essential. It's something we ought to be thinking about. I know the military thinks that they're going to island for seven days. What happens in your communities if you have no power for seven days or 14 days? I want to think about it, but we better start thinking about it and being addressing the climate implications as well as what do folks that don't like the United States have the capability of doing? Should start coming into our thinking a little bit more than it is. So I, I just wanted to reemphasize that the battery resilience component, because it's really, really important.
Thank you, Fred.
All right. And I'll just add one other thing is having an electric vehicle, particularly one with a large battery, gives you that much more capacity if you have to island yourself.
Hey, Michael, a question for you on that comment, you know, a year ago, I think it was after the pandemic, after the beginning of the pandemic, when we first started talking about resiliency and batteries and electric vehicles, the subject of using vehicles as backups to the batteries in your home, that did come up. But no one really knew like what the rollout timeframe on systems that would allow that to happen were. So right now, it seemed like the sort of vehicles, charging the vehicles was really only a one-way process. Do you know anything? Have you heard anything about sort of the other direction from battery vehicles? And Fred, your hand is still up.
I know Ford in particular is working on a charger that would allow you to go both ways. They're already advertising their electric F-150 as a way of powering your home. I don't know if you've seen the commercials, but yeah. So the state is actually looking at requiring electric vehicle chargers to, to be able to do that as well, so that there is more resiliency and, and the ability to have really small micro grids of each home if you need to.
I see Fred's hand went down and then up.
Yeah, just building on what he just said, the city of Gonzalez is addressing this right now. They have, they are in the process of installing a municipal microgrid that will enable the city to essentially go offline. And basically, they started down this path in response to the rolling blackout and the impact it was having on their industrial capacity. But they're putting in a combination of both distributed renewables as well as battery to allow them to go off the grid. I mean, and there are more and more towns across the United States that I have seen right now that are either building a resilient center for the town, a place where people can gather, be fed, have fuel dispensing for emergency vehicles and so on. So it, it, it feels way out there and we don't want to think about it, but slowly but surely we are seeing, and Gonzalez is, as I say, they're, they're underway right now, have the state approval or the PG&E agreement to do it.
Thank you. Guess now, next?
All right. So goal four is increased energy efficiency and new commercial. And like I say, we took the conservative assumption of zero reductions simply because those exemptions would probably cover most of the, or not, well, we assumed all of the new commercial development that would occur.
No comments here? We'll go to the next slide.
So goal five is energy efficiency through water conservation. Like I pointed out, the city of Carmel is already very water efficient. You already exceed the state water efficiency standards. So there's a really modest reduction here of three additional metric tons. But it's important to continue with the water conservation measures in order to, to maintain your low emission profile. And, and for a lot of other reasons as well. Resiliency is one. Potable water supplies are going to become more and more important as time goes on. Shall we go to goal six? Which I think is the urban heat island effect?
Yes.
So goal six, we didn't quantify any reductions associated with this one because you're already doing such a good job, particularly with the urban forest canopy and the issues associated with changing the code to allow cool roofs and, and cool pavement. We just took the conservative assumption that you wouldn't get any reductions, but that doesn't mean this isn't important, particularly that first one, maintaining that urban forest canopy.
Michael, could I ask, do you have some sort of estimate about what might be achieved if we did the last two, the rooftops and the pavement?
I would say that it would be very modest because if you're already going to electrification and your electricity is already really clean, the amount of reductions you get from cool roofs and not using the heat pump or the air conditioning near as much is not going to get you a big reduction in emissions. It's still, I It's still, I think, an important thing. We want to be efficient with our resources. That's that's one of the conundrums as we get to an emission-free electrical environment is is the temptation to be able to use electricity as if as if it was guilt-free. And I think we still need to be efficient. But from a GHG emission standpoint, for the reasons I just stated, it'd be a really modest reduction.
Yeah, and I I would also add from a from a grid standpoint, if we're adding all these battery backups and all, we're electrifying a lot of things, then we are adding strain on the electrical system. So it behooves us to reduce, to conserve where we can so that we can add to the to the grid.
A quick question on the the last bullet on this page. So we do, in normal years, we do some repaving and or resurfacing regularly. Does anybody here know if that routinely is a cost premium to do that versus the standard resurfacing? Just didn't know if somebody had a sense of that it costs as much.
It costs a little more to to do the cool pavement options as far as resurfacing. Not a lot more, but a little more. And I heard there were issues with its longevity, if you will, that you may wind up resurfacing a lot more often with cool pavement options than you do with standard treatments.
Arm. Yep, okay.
I suspect the technology over time is going to improve on that. Does on everything else. Shall we go to Goal Seven? I'm expecting a lot of conversation on the next two slides. So Goal Seven is a decrease of EMT, and that involves developing a bicycle master plan, a ride-sharing program, bike-to-work programs. The the third bullet's pretty easy to do. That's identify and promote existing shuttle services to airports for visitors to use. And where you would promote that would be in the hotels and the visitor's center and some of the places where visitors would be. The neighborhood electric vehicles and any V shuttles are are also a great option for local trips and for helping visitors just be able to navigate pretty easy from one end of the city to the other.
I have a question about that. As the fleet is increasingly electrified, you know, both because we have a somewhat affluent community here and as the state increases its reliance on electric vehicles, will we just automatically see, you know, increasing parts of this 563 megatons, regardless of whether we do this, a program like this or not?
I don't know. You'd probably see that transfer from this part of Goal Seven to electrify the fleet. You you may see the reductions there. The the beauty of a neighborhood electric vehicles, they're small. They're about the size of a golf cart for an individual person. And for the streets of Carmel, I think that that just blends really nicely with bicycle master plan and the pedestrian-friendly environment, much more so than a larger car that's highway-ready. Their speed, I think they go a maximum of thirty-five, but obviously you'd want to go slower than that in those areas, so.
Yeah, I heard it was thirty-eight. Is that right, Carrie?
Yeah, yes, it is. I had a chance to try one out recently. It was fun. I I could, I I could definitely see that those could be utilized more in Carmel, especially with the parking. So they're pretty cool.
Yeah, so there's reasons other than just the GHG reductions that that we keep that as an important component because I think it fits the community characters, particularly the downtown area. And it just allows more room on the streetscape for other modes of transportation than a full-size car does.
Like, and there are electric bikes, too. If I, I think a lot of people, you know, I ride my bike, I ride my bike around town a fair amount. But I think there are a lot of people that if our bike infrastructure was a little better, would would consider using electric bikes.
I agree. Yeah, I wish I wish I could bike to. Some of the streets in my area, it doesn't seem safe to bike on. It's a hodgepodge of where they have designated bike lanes, and even when they have designated bike lanes, the the traffic doesn't necessarily respect them.
Okay, well, you escaped Slide Seven pretty much relatively unscathed, so should we try Slide Eight?
So this is still Goal Seven, Part Two, the electric vehicle infrastructure and just really incentivizing the use of electric vehicles in the city. So having, we did some analysis and having the chargers in place really complement the increased purchase of electric vehicles. As your neighbors see electric vehicle chargers throughout the community, they're more enticed to buy an electric vehicle than they would if they're the very first ones to try it. There's some issues with charging stress and or range stress, I should say, and whether they're going to get home and be able to charge or not. So when there's chargers in the community, it helps a lot.
Have you ever seen that homeowners don't buy electric vehicles because they can't afford the charging station in their home? Are there, is there ever a demand for sort of neighborhood charging stations? Or with that, is that mostly just nonexistent?
That has not been an issue. There are incentive programs that each of the vehicle manufacturers put out for for getting a charger along with the car that makes it a much less price. The state has provided some tax credits. And some cities have actually gotten grants to completely offset the cost of putting an electric charger in in your home, at least the charger part of it. You may have to upgrade your electric panel and and have an electrician put in the wiring, but the charger itself wouldn't cost you. So I have not seen that as an impediment. The impediment that the studies I've seen have found, the major impediment, is if there's a lack of publicly available e-chargers within the area that a person drives, they have issues with getting an electric vehicle because they don't want to be stranded. So if they have one at work and they have, they see it around the community where they stop and shop and go to the movie theater or a restaurant, as well as in their home, that they're much more inclined to to have an electric vehicle than if there's an absence of those within the community.
Fred?
Yeah, two things. One is this whole subject of grants. The staff and I were talking about that this morning in terms of the infrastructure grants that are going to be coming out are going to be just chock full of climate change opportunities that we ought to be thinking about and prioritizing, figuring out where do we want to put our energy. Some of these grants are going to be competitive, some are not. Also, there was a question asked about the cool pavement. So I quickly looked it up to see what the Department of Energy's lab at Berkeley is saying. And basically, it's as Michael says, that there there's really pros and cons. All depends on what the what the treatment is. But it's it's still kind of out for for further analysis in terms of what is the real value of it because the energy cost of making the the coatings is sometimes as much or higher than the savings from having the coatings. And as Michael said, it also, they also require much more heavier investment in maintenance because they wear so quickly. So I just had a little backdrop.
I suspect those issues are going to improve over time. That's just always the case with new technology.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ever, Oliver?
I've got a couple of things to add to this one. I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what the raise hand feature is, so pardon me for just jumping in vocally. I am curious, actually, one comment is I do, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that 3CE is still offering financial incentives. They call it Electrify My Ride or Electrify Your Ride. And one of those incentives is specifically for EV charging infrastructure. Asking about it in regards to HOAs, because my mom lives at Hacienda, and she's a big advocate for trying to get that on board over there. So I know that there's some wonderful, good stuff there. And then I'm also curious about a comment that Michael Delappa had said in November in regards to EV charging. And I'm going to read it. It says, add EV chargers on every block and streamline EV charger permitting to comply with AB 1236 and 970 per guidance from Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. Apparently Carmel hasn't yet started. And so I did a little Googling and saw what some of that's all about. And I'm wondering if Carmel's begun the process of applying for that permit streaming, streamlining for EV's charging infrastructure, for getting it into the city.
And then, do you have any information on that?
I would have to check with our building division. I don't see electric permits, which is what an EV charger would be under. There, it's a relatively easy permit to apply for. So I imagine it's it's fairly streamlined to begin with. I do know the state, you know, has specific requirements. But but honestly, I I don't know just because I I don't touch those permits.
Got it, got it, okay. Yeah, apparently, went through a little research. All cities and counties, including charter cities in California, are required to comply with AB 1236 and AB 970. And the shell apply beginning on January first of 2023 for every city or county or city with fewer than 200,000 residents, and that's us.
Yeah, actually, I just got an email forwarded to me about that eight days ago. So it is on our radar, sent to the whole department. So if we are not already doing it, then we we will be soon.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you very much.
That issue brings up something that Anya and I talked a little bit about, and I was going to bring up in my presentation and didn't, is all of this work, once your climate action plan is adopted and you're initiating it, somebody's going to have to monitor progress, and you're going to have inventory updates. And somebody to track all of those incentives and somebody to track the grants and actually do the grant applications within the city. So something to think about in order to have, to to really have a functioning climate action plan. You need to have at least one staff member that is fully engaged in that. You can see easily how that could consume a hundred percent of their time if they're they're getting the data and monitoring progress of the plan, applying for grants, making all these changes to codes and zoning where additional staff could be, could really help out as opposed to just piling this on to your existing staff, who I'm assuming is is already pretty well has plenty of work to do as it is. So something to think about as far as initiating.
Do you have plenty of work to do, Anya? I think, Michael, if you look down, if you look down at the agenda, not at your item, that's the last thing we're talking about, that exact topic is is the very end of our agenda today. So.
Oh, great.
Should we move on to the next slide?
Sure. So Goal Eight, reduce solid waste. All of these things, I think Carmel already does. You're already promoting zero-waste events and promoting home composting. You're going to be required to comply with SB 1383 and promote reuse containers rather than recyclables. The the big one here is educating the community on the use of those city-provided containers. I know my mom is always confused as to what goes where. So we we all get a little confused when you have so many.
All right, let's make, we can move on to the next one.
All right, and then Goal Nine, increase clean energy use. And this is really incentivizing PV solar panel installation, so rooftop solar or distributed solar in combination with those that that battery storage and electrification of your home and having an electric vehicle really has a lot of benefits, not just GHG reductions, but also as far as being able to sustain a lot longer, your your ability to stay off-grid if if the grid were to go down. I had heard in earlier meetings that there was a comment that you don't get enough sun to really take advantage of PV solar.
Well, the fog is an issue in the summer.
Yeah.
And we do have a decent amount of tree covers, so some houses would have some issues with that.
We do also get plenty of applications for solar, though. So some some might struggle, but it it doesn't seem to be an issue across the board.
I didn't think so. I did a little research, and there there is still enough sunshine to to make PV solar panels actually pay for themselves over about a five-year period. All right, that was, that's Goal Nine. That's the last one, so.
Do we have any more comments from the public or from committee members about anything that we've talked about in the past hour?
I just think it really puts everything in perspective. It's a great report. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Yes, so thank you, as I said earlier. Thank you for everything that you've done. I would, if the committee members, you know, if you have any comments, I believe that Anya is going to take this, take the stuff that we have talked about today and turn it into a report, so put a put a nice wrapper around it. And I believe, Anya, if I'm I'm right, with sort of a list of action items that we'll we'll sort of, we'll sort of talk about. We'll talk about that process later in the day, later in the meeting, later during the meeting. So if you have anything, you know, minor that you, you know, would like to bring to Anya's attention, please, please tell her. I I'm hoping that we will get to review a draft of the report, and we can sort of review the stuff that Michael has done today as well as the rest of the report next month in preparation for having sort of a final first draft at the at the April meeting. Nancy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so my only suggestion is, as Michael, in his background, knows a lot of what other cities are doing. If he sees, you know, a best practice or something he'd like to know just to do, if he knows we're not doing it, it would be great to have him include that or annotate that in his report if that's viable in scope.
Sure. So should we move on to the next thing? Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
The next thing is receive a project status update and discuss community outreach.
All right.
I'm hoping that Anya is doing. I'm hoping that Anyas is doing this one.
Yes, I can provide the project status update. Um, I can share, so I said, in your agenda packet, you have the spreadsheets and I will Share them now. Okay, so you can see my spreadsheet. I will zoom out of it a little bit, so we can see more of this. And actually, I will, hold on just one second. Okay, so if you guys took a quick look at our spreadsheet, what you might have noticed is we've actually accomplished quite a bit. Uh, that is kind of the first thing I really want to point out. Because we are almost there. Uh, and I need to actually move this again. Okay, so we're looking at February twenty 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 two. This is our column. We've actually, we are now in phase four Of the project for the both, really, the climate action and the adaptation plan. I have the adaptation work plan up right now. And you can see that we're entering the climate adaptation plan writing phase. We've really done a lot of work honing in on our strategies. And now over the next couple of months, we're putting together the plan. We're actually going to review the draft adaptation plan at our next meeting. Uh, the committee will have an opportunity for review and then there'll be some edits. We're looking for engagement and outreach to gather feedback in April and May. Uh, and then Taking the plan to the commissions, so both planning and first in Beach Commission in May for their Review and see if they have any comments. And then finally, taking it to City Council in June for their review. Uh, based on comments that we received during the engagement Uh, as well as the various commissions and the council, We will update the plan and bring it back to council for adoption in August. And if you look at the climate adaptation, the climate action plan, It follows a similar pattern Where we are wrapping things up with, you know, Identifying our strategies and we're starting to write the report actually, sort of, at the same time. We are assembling the, we're going to begin assembling the plan and have it for review. Um, we'll have A more finalized version of the list of strategies and possibly a draft plan for review at the next meeting. And if not, for sure at the April meeting. And again, we're looking to take the the action plan Uh, to the commissions and City Council under the same schedule. So bringing both plans to the commissions in May And to City Council in June and then adoption in August. So I, um, this brings us to Uh, the question about public engagement and being ready to To have the public review it before the commission, so that would be in April and and May. Um, and, um, okay, let me stop sharing. Are there any questions before we talk about, you know, public engagement? Are there any questions about the status of the project and where we're going from here? Doesn't look like it. So we're in the final stretch, we're in the home stretch, which is really great news. And so in terms of engagement, uh, before, I know at the last meeting, there was a little, there was uh some potential concerns With the impact of these plans on especially the construction community. And I think maybe John and I don't remember if it was John and Michael or John and Jeff who were maybe going to
I think it was, I think it was me and John, and I think we had sort of drafted Michael since he wasn't at the meeting and we felt like we could do that. Um, but we have not talked yet, but I'll make an effort to get that done next week.
Yeah, I think that will be also in the, um, in the, in the spreadsheet with the engagement spreadsheet that I included in your In the, in the packet, there are various entities that we were going to send the draft plans to, and we're still planning on doing that. Uh, quite a few of them are our agencies and larger groups that You know, it's, it's going to be more For, for information. Um, I, I'm guessing a lot of them will not have a lot of comments on them, but it's just for their information. Uh, the construction industry may have some comments. And so were there any thoughts or or aside from the construction industry, were there any thoughts on other Uh, entities that we really should try to uh reach out to before Uh, before we go to commissions and City Council?
Yes, wouldn't that also include the heating, air conditioning type side of the construction business too? So it's, and those always aren't in in construction, so but should
And the designers also.
Yeah.
Fred?
Fred?
Yeah.
You, you partially got it right there. I was, I was going to mention the the architects and and design Part of the construction industry. I didn't know whether you included them together or separately, but they certainly will have a good impact For if they're informing their, uh, their clients as it's being designed rather than informing the contractor is retelling you're going to have to build it. The other piece of it, I don't have an appreciation because I've been here two days Where this fits in the overall priority of things that are really important to the council. But if you're not going to be actually getting final adoption until August, that will be after the next budget year has started. So as we're thinking about, I'll call it the strategic issues for the council to contemplate Building into your upcoming budget. Uh, you know, somebody's already mentioned the need for uh the grantmanship and and the actual management of the program. You know, you need to be putting a budget wedge in there sooner rather than later, so you could actually start the process. So you don't get everything, so you're doing things in parallel rather than wait till the plan's approved and then you get something per budget then. And because you'll be two years away from a decision before you can do anything, and that's, that's nothing but frustrating. So that would be something that the staff and I can talk about as we put together our recommendations for you.
Yes, thank you. We do have, as as many people on the call know, we have, there's a council strategic priority meeting The the tenth of March, I believe, and then we start, we start the whole budget discussion, so that's all, that's all coming up right now.
So we definitely hope to, um, Fred, to tie in, um, capital improvements Um, recommendations from this uh plan. Um, so especially with the seawall issue that is going to severely affect Carmel. So we're, we are trying to think about that. So thank you.
And I assume that we'll all, you know, we've all reached out to groups before such as Friends of the Forest and Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve and the CRA. And so I'm assuming that, you know, since everybody has the timeline That we will all sort of reach out to the same groups after the draft is published in in April.
Yes, I think we should, we should probably just do A blast of the the draft reports to each of the the groups that were identified on the Uh, in our, in our outreach list. Okay, um, if there are any other, any other thoughts on public outreach as we're wrapping up the project? If not, we'll move on to the next item. Which is Jeff's.
Yeah, so this is just supposed to be sort of an open ended discussion About who should take the mantle of sort of the climate change committee moving forward after, after we publish our reports. And there are sort of, as some background, there are two timeframes involved. One of them is over the next five or 10 years. You know, who should take the responsibilities of Um, of what we do and then what we have done. And then the the sort of part two of this is what to do about the next year Where we have talked about, you know, Anyas just mentioned that we were going, or I think Carrie just mentioned that we were going to Look to the, look to the next year's budget for funding for the seawall, the the sort of geological work In order to understand what's going to happen to the beach and and sort of amend our report. So someone will need to amend the version one point O of this report and turn it into a version one point one. So sort of two, two, uh, two questions. Um, I think, uh, I was, when I, when I was putting this report together, I thought it would be more useful to talk about the long term, The long term answer first. Um, what should we do over the next five or 10 years? And then we could maybe try to cobble together a short term answer after we do that. And and from my perspective, You know, Anyas and I had, Anyas and I and Carrie had a pretty good chat over this. Anyas and I and Evan and Carrie had a pretty good chat over this. And the question is, you know, is this a sort of Uh, a council responsibility? Is it a staff responsibility or is it a commission responsibility? And this is a completely open ended discussion, so we would definitely like to hear Um, what committee members in the public think About where where this responsibility should be over the course of the next decade. Don't everybody raise your hand at once? Lynette?
I think ultimately it is City Council, But certainly City Council will not, should not, cannot be the driving Partner in the day to day, month to month work That needs to be done, uh, both implementation work and further proposal work. So it seems to me that While I know the city may not have an appetite for more commissions or more wrangling people to do work, It seems to me that either a new, new permanent climate change commission Or at least some sort of city staff group Who are responsible for this work and working with current Commissions. So I see it as either a commission Or staff who then work with the existing commissions. Because unless there is a point entity, My concern is that a lot of these things, because they are so daunting and they are so All encompassing of so many things within the city. My concern is that a lot of them will fall by the wayside and they will either be done in part Or they will be deferred and there there won't really be the kind of ownership Of some of these initiatives that is needed in order To achieve any of the outcomes that are in Michael's plan, much less whatever we hear about sea level rise.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, let's go to Fred. I think Fred's hand was up next.
I I think the answer, sir, is all of the above. Because if this is really going to take hold And be an important part of the future of Carmel, it's going to take the City Council Saying this is important to us and making it a very high priorities. You know, strategic priority, uh, when you start talking about it and resourcing that priority. And then it's going to flow to ship, to develop the staffing needs necessary to achieve that. Uh, the commission, again, I I I don't have a feel for it yet. It's, it's obviously the planning commission will have an important role in it because you're really talking about Uh, I'll call it an enhancement, changing of many of your, of your codes and 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 approaches to long term planning. I I don't know whether you can, I'll call it afford another commission. It's always that push and pull. You want maximum involvement, but at the same time Uh, there are a lot of resources that go into the public commission process that that I would say that's to be determined. But certainly a high council priority, near term resources to put the, I'll call it the person or the people In place to start talking about getting grant applications and maximizing the Carmel's share Of whatever comes out of the president's infrastructure budget. Uh, and and state, there's, there are so many players in this right now That if you just stand by and focus on a CIP project here or there, I think you're going to get behind. You really need a more strategic approach And somebody on the staff that is responsible for implementing the policy direction of the council and at least the planning commission a lot more. That that would be my thought, sir.
Thank you, Fred. Uh, Michael?
You know, I agree with what both the two speakers have said. And I think what this committee is achieving Is providing a basis for measures, you know, and priorities. And so those are going to have to be funded, so it is, it's going to be a process of establishing a capital improvements budget. Then delegating how to, you know, Public Works, Planning Commission. Uh, Planning Commission obviously needs to be reviewing our guidelines, residential, commercial guidelines So that we implement the changes that are necessary to happen to make more efficiency. You know, that Michael Hendricks has pointed out on the residential and commercial level. And then we need to have a process of periodic review. So it's, you know, It is a challenge in totality of the whole city. But we've, we've, we've started, we've made a really great start here, providing the The city with a document that they could use to get this going. So I think it's going to be a challenge for, or a job for, you know, the council, The boards and commissions and the staff Do this.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, um, it seems, can I think in concert with some of the other comments? It seems like we really need, you know, one designated person to be the climate czar, whether that's Anyas or Or some other designate there, I'll volunteer her. But that can be cross functional within the city teams. But again, I also don't know if this is within the bounds of how City Council can work. But it would be great if one, I mean, the different City Council members Are are assigned to certain topics like Ambag and Washbag and whatever else that we've got out there. And it would be great to have one of the council members dedicated to or in their responsibility scope. Uh, kind of the, the designated person, go to person on climate, just kind of as Jeff, you and and Carrie have been Uh, double teaming it. We need to have at least one person on City Council that carries the the climate change related torch. Uh, and it seems like, given the nature of the work ahead, that That, you know, Public Works and the Planning Commission or the, and or the Planning Department Um, are also very heavily involved in all of this stuff. So whether or not they have, you know, again, a designated hitter Uh, on these topics, on the climate related measures and initiatives in each one of those organizations. But potentially also inside the planning commission, Uh, is it possible to get somebody designated To be the the climate deep dive person where it's needed? So one at the council, one at the planning commission. So one at the council, uh one at the planning commission and um potentially individuals uh or individual at least in Public Works and uh the planning and building. So hopefully that's stating the obvious or
Thank you.
Unrealistic that too.
Uh Carrie?
Um I've got a question for Anya's. Um what do you think the, the staff time commitment would be to kind of keep um these two plans uh on the radar for somebody?
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
It depends if you're keeping it on the radar or if you're actually making it a priority. I, I would guess if, if the public outreach is a pri- it becomes a priority, that is fairly time-consuming. If um you wanna do grant applications so that we can uh actually get some grants to and then manage those grants, that's, that's fairly time-intensive. Uh and then uh keeping track of everything could be fairly time-intensive as well. I could, I could see this easily being a full-time person. If you're considering, say, the sea level rise, uh you know, engineering study, you need a project manager. If that person's gonna manage that project plus do everything else, that's, that's, that would be easily a full-time person.
Carrie, my concern would be if you don't put a staff person uh now with climate change stamped on their chest, this will be a program that will go on the shelf because everybody is too busy doing everything else. And and that, and it goes back to the council saying this is a priority and we're going to invest and it is such an important priority. And then Chip has to make it happen.
Right. And that's, you know, trying to get a a a sense of uh what the, the the, what the staff would do and, you know, the whole grant application. Our, our city continues to um be challenged by all these grants that are out there and we don't have anybody dedicated to doing that. And um it it's very cyclic when they, you know, some, they come up and and managing that. So um we, we continue to be challenged by that. And so trying to get a, a handle of, you know, is this a full-time position? Is it a half-time position? Um that's, and then that rolls into the budget issue. So um so yeah.
Yeah, my thought, and again, we, I, you know, we're, I'm just getting on board. My thought will be uh that as we go forward to Chip with the recommendation, if you're really gonna put an emphasis on it, make it a, a s- start with a single full-time position that is focused on both the implementation and getting the grants. And then when you start getting the grants and the grant uh management and others, you may find that there are so many grants out there of this. I mean, the amount of money that the Congress has passed is mind-boggling. Uh so this is not going to be a one-and-done in one year. You can have a very, I had a, I had a full-time grants coordinator in Monterey and that's nothing, that's all they did. Because once you get the grant, then you've got to administer the darn thing. And many of them, you have to spend the money and get reimbursed. So grant administration itself can really be very, very time-consuming depending upon the requirements of the granting agency. So, you know, I would start with one person and let's see where it goes and see if the council and the community embrace this the way I think we should. Because the, it, it, there are so many forces coming in all at the same time. And and the climate umbrella allows you to address a whole bunch of things somewhat simultaneously under that one umbrella to, to get somebody else's money to do the work.
In terms of a staff.
Hold on a second. Here from uh Laura has her hand up.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll make it really quick. Um I just wanted to say, um I really re- appreciate um everything that Fred is saying and bringing to this conversation. I totally agree. And I feel like we're in new times, going back to one of the first comments that Fred made. It's a new chapter in this world. And it's a conversation that is so important and it's not gonna be going away anytime soon. So if I had to choose from the options um under B, I would say a new permanent climate change commission, please. And I'd also like to back that up with, I, I know I'm, I'm, you know, a member of the public, but I'd love to help in any way I can.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
I'm writing, I'm writing that one down.
Um I wanted to talk about the staff position because if we, if we believe that the council will make this a priority, which I agree that it should and must, then we need to be sure that the staff person is at a level that is respectful of that being a priority. That it's not a purely administrative role, but that it is a role that is of a level that will have some initial and ongoing legitimacy and credibility.
Thank you. Uh Carrie, do you, are you, you have any more comments before I speak?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Jeff.
So my only, my comment here, you know, uh going back to that conversation that we had um a couple of weeks ago was that I do think that this belongs, you know, my, my strongest feelings are that the responsibilities belong under one of the commissions, not under the council. I don't think the council has time to sort of manage the efforts of this new staff person. And then I think about the commissions we have and to, I think, to Fred's first comment. You know, a lot of this seems to um, seems to sort of vector in on the planning commission. And I know that there has been a lot of talk and we'll find out on the tenth whether the design review part of the planning commission is going to be split off from the planning part of the planning commission. Um and so we will end up with two commissions that way. Um my fear about having another, you know, I heard Laura talk about another commission. My fear is that we're gonna be commissioned out. Um the city has um um you know, four or five commissions now. And frankly, we do have a problem recruiting enough people from our three thousand-member community to fill all the spots. Um it, it, you know, some, some years it's uh, some years we have a really good crop of applicants and some years we really struggle even, even uh putting people in chairs. So my own preference would be to sort of, you know, if we get the planning commission, design review board stuff sort of straightened out, I'm kind of looking, I see Carrie, you know, I presume Carrie is on the same page. I think the council's on the same page, would be to sort of make a play for putting these responsibilities in the, in the planning commission. And I certainly, uh and and then on the other, on the other front about the staff member, I certainly appreciate um everybody's comments about um adding a staff member to focus on this. I think those are really points that are really well-taken. And I, I'm sure that Carrie and I will talk about this afterwards and that we'll both talk to Chip um and we'll run these things by Chip. And then we'll see where we end up. Um we'll see where we end up come the beginning of March. I think that that's um, I'm, I'm fairly certain that that will happen. Uh that the conversations will happen. And then hopefully, Anya's, we can talk about this again next month. And we'll have sort of some, maybe we'll have a progress report since we will have had the strategic planning um by, by this, by this meeting next month. So thank you, everybody, for those comments. And then part B of this conversation was what to do about the one what to do about the one remaining item, which is the sea level rise. And and I'll, let me just frame the conversation without expressing an opinion one way or another. You know, the sort of the two options would be to either keep this committee um keep this committee intact for another year with sort of a reduced, presumably a reduced meeting schedule um to just handle the sea level rise part and the update to the adaptation plan or to find someone else to do it. Um and and the, everyone on this committee is sort of on the committee by name. I know, you know, if Carrie and I weren't on the uh council anymore, we could still be on this committee since we're sort of named as members um come, come election time. But I would like to hear from, especially from the committee members, you know, your willingness or whether we should kind of replace you, which would be completely fine. Um you know, what, what do you think about this topic?
Didn't you at one point uh discuss hiring a engineering firm to analyze that?
Yes, so, so the assumption, the assumption that we're sort of making, and and this is, this is not at all a slam dunk, would be that we would hire an engineering firm to do the sort of geological analysis of the, of the, of the sea, of the bay. And then we would update the adaptation report to a version one point one. And some committee like us um would just sort of oversee staff, you know, would be sort of the presenting body. You know, do the public outreach, what little public outreach we have, and then sort of give that to the council for adoption, you know, presumably a year after, however long it takes to do that. So that's the assumption. If that doesn't come to pass, um that we don't get that money in the budget cycle that's coming up, then then I'm assuming that we would be finished in our task. Is that, do you agree with that, Anya's, Carrie?
Yes.
So that, how's that, John?
Uh, okay, no, I, I understand. You're not looking for volunteers like right now.
Well, I've never, I think we're just, and maybe, I'm sorry, we're sort of putting everybody on the spot and maybe we should have this conversation next month instead.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just how would everybody feel if we had this reduced workload that was carried over into, into next year? I guess that's the basic question and maybe we should have this conversation next month.
Agree. Next one.
Well, I mean, do, do, do the meetings go to quarterly or do they go to twice a year? Um if the, if the committee is still in place. Um so that's kind of what we're trying to get some feedback on.
Michael?
Uh I'm, I'm trying, yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle on. It sounds like you want the committee to focus on specifically just sea level rise, the, the continuation, the agenda. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it was only for this, uh you know, when we put this agenda item together and we look at the work that we've done or the work that we didn't do. Um it's only the um, the sea level rise part, which we just simply didn't have the funds to do, the funds and the time to do. So with the only task remaining, you know, right now at least, you know, there's always scope creep, which we'll try to keep out. But the only task remaining at this point would be to update the report for sea level rise.
Yeah, I've, I mean, I feel like sea level rise is gonna be one of the uh really significant impacts that's gonna happen to this community. And it's, and it's pretty much locked in uh with the, the situation that we have, you know, in terms of uh, you know, the existing greenhouse gases and the fact that uh most of sea level is kind of cooked into the uh, the temperature and the expansion of, of, of the water. So I really think that needs to be focused on as a real priority. So if, if you feel like it ha- we haven't done enough yet to provide enough direction to the council to focus in on this, or if we need experts that need to be contacted to provide us with more information. And I think that's something that, that needs to be done. You know, how the committee works on it, I'm up for suggestions or whatever, but I feel like it's really high priority.
Thank you. Lynette?
I, I agree with Michael that it is a real priority. Um and one of my disappointments, as I've expressed to Jeff and to Carrie, is that we were not able to have funding to do this study for this report. Um it seems like it's such an obvious part of any climate change work that for us not to be able to present this in a way that is almost an imperative for the council to provide um the funding. And hopefully at this strategic um priority meeting, there will be an acknowledgement that it is a priority and that it is something that needs to be funded. So I feel like the work needs to go forward. It needs to be in the hands of those who are knowledgeable and who are willing to continue it. And I agree that maybe next time, after we know what the council says about the priority, it would be a, a great time to talk about it.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Um Carrie, do you think maybe we should just have a discussion next month that we can talk about this offline before then?
Yeah, I think um, I think it's kind of a, a continuing discussion item uh to see how, how things develop. So um having it again on the agenda, I think is a good idea.
Okay. And we'll call that, we'll call that a wrap and we'll see everybody. Um February has twenty-eight days, so that means we'll be see you all on March seventeenth.
Good. See you next month. Thank you, everyone.
Adios.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Good meeting.
Thanks, Anya's. Good job.
Thank you.